The next event is a very happy one, which is the swearing in of our new council member and a second term for an existing council member. Ron, are you going to read that or how's that?
Actually Barney, both Joy and Stephanie can stand, raise their right hand and read the oath together simultaneously.
That's all that's required.
That's all.
I, Stephanie Marks, do swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of council member according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Great. Okay. The next item of business is the election of council officers and committee liaisons. Is there a motion to be made in that regard?
Yeah, I nominate the following council members for roles on the council. Irene Lane as mayor, Barney Rush as vice mayor, Richard Brancato as treasurer, Stephanie Martz as secretary, and Joy White as community liaison.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay. Congratulations.
So our next resolution is for county, uh, community liaisons, if you are, or committee liaisons. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and, and that we would assign the following council members to liaisons of these committees. So Barney Rush as liaison to long-range planning, Rich Brancato as liaison to land use, Stephanie Martz as liaison to community relations, Joy White as liaison to climate and environment, and Irene Lane as liaison to public services.
Is there a second?
Oh, one more thing. Exactly. I, I'm sorry about, I missed the most important one. And Barney Rush also as liaison to the Corso subcommittee.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, everyone. I had just prepared a few comments if, if my colleagues will oblige me for a moment. Thank you all for coming this evening. I'm honored and humbled to be before you today as your newly elected mayor of our beloved town. As I take on this role, I'm reminded of the great responsibility that comes with serving our wonderful community, and I'm committed to working hard to ensure that our town continues to be a welcoming and lovely place to live. First and foremost, I want to express my gratitude to everyone who voted in this year's election and to Joy and Stephanie for lending their expertise, skills, and perspective to serve our town. Of course, thank you to Barney and Rich as well for your continued leadership and lending of your talents, and to the town staff for their unwavering commitment toward providing high-quality services. For all my colleagues, I appreciate you placing your trust in me to lead our town forward, and I hope that I will do the role justice. To all our residents, I want to reiterate what Barney and other mayors, as well as other council members before me have said, that your voices, your questions, your concerns, and your opinions matter, and I promise to listen to each and every one of them as we work together over the coming year. Our town may be small, but it's filled with hard-working, dedicated individuals who are passionate about making a difference. Working together, we can tackle challenges that lie ahead and create an even stronger, more vibrant community. There are a number of priorities that our town will face in this coming year, including the final list of amenities and site plan details and prospective cost overruns for Bethesda Market Park, the site plan, traffic and parking details of Corso Senior Living Community, the Zimmerman Park Upgrade Project, Coquelin Run concerns about flow given Purple Line construction, public safety initiatives that aim to address traffic and safety, including east-west highway crosswalk signalization, continuing to put on a variety of community events, including programs that combat hate speech, and the potential residential zoning, rezoning of our town to allow for multifamily housing by right, just to name a few. For all these and other issues that may arrive, arise this year, this council will listen to all resident concerns and comments, as well as engage and partner with our county and state leaders toward a resolution. My overarching goal will be to ensure that our town remains a safe and welcoming place for everyone. That means being committed to collaboration, as well as continuing to promote timely, open communication at all levels. With that, I ask that you all please take the time to share your concerns and questions directly with me or another member of the council, so that we may have thoughtful discussions based on facts and a mutual willingness to solving a problem. By working together, we can make our town an even better place to call home. Finally, I want to emphasize the importance of community engagement. Our town is only as strong as the people who get involved. I encourage each and every one of you to attend county, town council meetings, perhaps join a standing committee or a subcommittee initiative, or just participate in more town events so that you may get to know your neighbors better. Being present makes all the difference. In closing, I want to thank you all again for this incredible honor. I'm committed to serving you to the best of my ability, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you. So I think the next thing is the financial report, so this will be my last one until Rich takes over. So we just concluded our 10th month of the fiscal year, and even though we're, we're starting a new council year, it's good for continuity to have a couple months overlap. We've received about 90% or $4.1 million of our budgeted operating revenue and spent approximately 73% or $2.6 million of our budgeted expenditures. Also, the council last week during its annual meeting approved the new and lowered property tax rate to maintain the constant yield. That's all for the financial report, so we're in good standing. I believe the next, there might be a switch. Todd, I wasn't sure if we were still going to proceed as, as we discussed. So I believe that we're going to just do a little bit of a switch and talk about the National Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation. I'm happy to read it first unless there are some comments that anyone wants to make or, or questions that anyone has. Great. Excuse me while I find the actual wording. Okay. So I'll read the proclamation and then we'll go to a vote from there. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town, in the town of Chevy Chase, Maryland, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, on average, there are more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 more times likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Maryland has 760, sorry, 796 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13.3 deaths per 100,000 people, Maryland has the 31st highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas towns across the nation are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety is the highest responsibility of local government. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 26th birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the more than 120 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations is designated June 2nd, 2023, the first Friday in June, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human, human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about, about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can, we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help our, to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town of Chevy Chase, Maryland declares the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all citizens to support their local communities and government efforts to prevent gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. So with that, unless there's any discussion, we can go straight to a vote. Oh, please Barney.
Yeah, I'll make a point. I think in general, the council has historically not endorsed resolutions like this, just because there's so many wonderful, good causes in this world that go well beyond the dimensions of activities of this town. And I think wisely, the town council is generally astute going down that route of, of basically diffusing its own efforts on things that are rent a can't affect. But this resolution, which is now, I think, the third or fourth year that we've approved it, I've approved it every time, I'm willing to have as an exception to that. I just find the, the, the extraordinary level of, of killing, mass shootings in the United States so intolerable. The attitude of so many politicians to not curb guns as they need to be, just so outrageous and so heinous, that I think this to me is a worthwhile exception to, for the town council to support something like this. There's very little we can do about what happens, especially at the gun laws of other states, but at least we can speak up, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Thank you. Well said Barney. All approve? Unanimous. Wonderful. I also want to mention to everyone as well in here on the line that part of the support for this is that the town likes to back up these important topics with actions that we can take as a community. I encourage you all to attend on Thursday, June 8th. There's going to be a, a discussion and desserts sponsored by the Community Relations Committee, the State of Gun Violence, which is going to, to involve expertise, expert presentations on how to address the epidemic overview of gun laws, as well as an update on the recently passed Maryland state legislation. So I encourage you all to RSVP and attend. It'll be in this room on Thursday, June 8th at 7 o'clock, and thank you all for your support. Great. So next will be the town manager's report, please.
Thanks Irene. I think we're okay to let Ron go, correct?
I believe so. Thank you, Ron.
Just for this evening, right?
No, forever. See ya. Thanks Irene. I'll briefly review staff activities over the last month. Bear with me, there's been a lot going on though. Staff continue to assist with several major projects, including Corso rezoning and redevelopment, and the Bethesda Market Parks redevelopment or Parks Development Project. There on Corso, I should mention that Jason Azar and Dave Walton will attend a Stormwater Management Strategy kickoff meeting on May 19th with both Corso and Montgomery County Department of Purbaning Services. So we'll ask them to report back on the discussion issues for our consideration and, and next steps in reviewing the stormwater management plan for, for that property. On the Bethesda Market Park project, I should note that staff prepared and submitted an amended grant application naming Montgomery Parks as the co-grantee for the FY23 state grant of 500,000. We've also submitted, as you know, the town survey results for the proposed park amenities to the Parks Department for consideration in developing the next concept plan, which is going to be presented to the community on June 14th, at a virtual meeting on June 14th. The time is to be determined. And the Zoom link is yet to be posted, but we'll publicize that information when Parks makes it available. Let's see. Staff worked with the town attorney to prepare for a council discussion of town development regulations and potential amendments to town sign regulations. We assisted with writing and sending a letter to to officials in Maryland Department of the Environment and the Maryland Transit Administration regarding the lack of water flow in Coquelin Run. And, and we'll discuss that issue a little later on the agenda, what kind of response we received and what the issue is specifically. Staff continue to manage town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman Park redevelopment, which will be discussed later, as well as Coquelin Run stabilization. Dave, can you give the council a brief and the community a brief update on, on status of Coquelin Run? And this is separate, this is Coquelin Run stabilization, separate from the lack of water in Coquelin Run. Two separate issues, but same waterway.
Yeah, I guess we have been in for permitting with Maryland Department of the Environment. We received, we responded to those. We haven't got their final approval. We think there shouldn't be any issues with our response, so we expect getting our permit sometime in the next few weeks. Ron was drafted a right entry agreement and easement to allow us to actually go on the property to do the work, which we certainly did draft to the property owners. And once we get the final construction agreement approved, we attach that as an exhibit onto that agreement and we'll distribute it for signatures.
Do they have any concerns, Dave?
I have no concerns.
No, do they have any? None, none. Okay, just checking.
I guess just to make sure that we can get everybody to sign it, because there are six or seven different property owners that all need to consent since it's jointly in a property.
That's great to know we can undertake an infrastructure project with all six, all near neighbors approving it. That's, I'm glad I was sitting down to hear that.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Dave.
I've reached out to our contractor, started to figure out their availability to do the work, so we're hoping it'll be sometime this summer.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Staff managed the town's 2023 election. The results were announced yesterday. Congratulations to Joy and Stephanie. We organized and attended the annual meeting, published the final FY24 budget. We certified the FY24 tax rates to the county, which will appear on the consolidated tax bill. And we submitted the FY24 constant yield tax rate notice to the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. Staff also submitted the annual ARPA obligation and expenditure report by the April 30 deadline. We also prepared a staff report and have, will distribute such staff report to the council soon regarding the 46th Street traffic restrictions and signage proposal, which will be discussed a little bit later this evening. We installed an LED stop sign in Westbound Stamford at East and deployed the mobile radar speedboard on Bradley Lane. We continue to assist with organizing the anti-Semitism resolution among Montgomery County municipalities that will be discussed later as well. After the National Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation, continue planning for the second phase of town office improvements, which are primarily lighting and, and ceiling tiles, manage the trash and treasures event, and continue to provide support to town committees. And that concludes the staff report.
Anyone have any questions? I had a quick question for you, Todd, about the website.
Oh, I forgot to mention that. Thank you. It will be going live, um, June, June something, mid, mid-June. Let me look. We just got confirmation of when we're going live. It will be. Sorry.
That's okay. Some point in June.
It, it's early June. I can't find the email right now. I think I populated it to my calendar and it's June 12th or 14th or something.
Flag day.
Let's see.
Well, that's, that's fine. I was just wondering. It's imminent, is.
It's imminent. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Just got confirmation on that, so it's, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm that this, I'll give you the exact date once I find it.
Okay, great. So next will be public comments. Would anyone like to, either on the line or in the room? Are you seeing anyone raising their hand, Todd?
There is no one. I'll raise it. Sorry.
Okay. So with that, we'll turn over to council discussions, and first up is Corso. Barney, would you like to?
The, we have executed the letter of agreement with the attached Declaration of Covenants. And that's certainly a very significant milestone. As we mentioned before, what's useful to repeat is that this means that, and ultimately this becomes effective after the site plan, after they begin to get a permits, but when that, when it becomes effective, the Declaration of Covenants means that if the developers ever wish to make changes in the future that are the matters that are in that Declaration of Covenants, they have to actually get approval from the town of Chevy Chase. It's not adequate for them just to get approval for changes from the county in a process in which the town may participate. It's stronger than that. They actually have to come to the town and get our approval. And so that's really a significant tightening of the restrictions and the development, or not on the development as they wish to make it, but on any potential changes that they or some future owner may wish to make to it. That being said, there's, there's going to be other work as well coming down the pike, some which Todd has referred to, which is the question of signage and fencing and other things as the site planned. As we begin to see the site plans again engaged in it, there'll be ongoing discussions regarding stormwater management, which I'm very pleased by the way that they've been so upfront and welcoming of our participation in that. And also coming down the pike will be the study on parking to give us assurance that there will be adequate parking onsite for all the employees, people who live there, as well as for visitors on key days. And also a traffic study, which matters a lot to us, particularly in respect to signal, prospective signalization and pedestrian safety. That being said, as we all know, Corso is not the decision-maker in regard to signalization. It's the state highway administration. So we can't get over optimistic about where this goes. But with the commitments of Corso to be actively engaged in, do a new traffic study and work with us for signalization is there. So in any event, I think we may have a quiet few months while they're just doing all their preliminary work. But I would imagine by the fall that a lot more of this will come down the pike and we'll work on it on a steady-state basis. But I think we have established a very good working rapport with Corso, which is great, and we hope that will continue.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Todd, anything I left out that we need to?
No, I believe you've covered it. Other than the county council will be holding a hearing on the LMA application sometime in, assumedly, or potentially June, but.
I didn't know the date of that, but yeah. But the hearing examiner has finished her report and she's sent to the county council. And nobody anticipates that the county council will do anything other than just stamp it, basically. There's no, no reason why they would do anything else.
Yeah, I think you covered it all. Thanks.
And those corrections were updated in the, the corrections to.
They were accepted, including yours.
Thank you. So.
For the record, we have to give Irene credit. Reading through this long memorandum, she noted, at one point, the town of Chevy Chase was defined as section two. And that, of course, is unacceptable.
Great. Next up is the Bethesda Market Park.
Sure. Very pleased, Ellen, that you can join us. I, I don't see you, but I see your name there on the screen, so I assume you're there. And Ellen is going to give the report from the Long Range Planning Committee. But before I turn over to Ellen to talk about that and the charrette process, generally, just a couple of other comments to make. The, in respect, as you all know, that we have a call every other week with our three partners, with the county department, principally the Department of Transportation, with the, the Parks Department, and, and, and with the developers. And Irene and Todd and I have been on these calls on a regular basis. The where we, there are a few things that I want to bring up in regard to that. First is, we have been, we are asking for clarification in respect to the utility work that has to be done. How much of that utility work would need to be done prior to construction closing? As opposed to what would be done after construction closing? Just again, to walk through that process, they will have to go through a site plan, presumably go through that, start this this fall, get approval early, probably January, say, of next year. They anticipate a year to pull permits. So they would be planning to start construction in January, February of 2025, which would mean that they would get closure on their financing, presumably, you know, about then, or December of 2024. Assuming, assuming credit markets open up, banks are lending again, they can do that. So that's, you know, there's some, some risks here of delay. But in any event, that is the schedule that they are currently on. And the, but the question is, and they've often said that they have felt burned, not burned, but really witnessed how dramatically the issue of getting the utilities done on a timely basis has slowed down the development of the Purple Line. And so they've sort of been asking themselves, what can we do or should we do to potentially make sure this project construction stays on track? And, and potentially therefore want at least, or feel that on a critical path, some of the undergrounding of the utility work perhaps should begin before construction close. And that's simply a question they've posed. What I've asked for then is, well, give us a map. Tell us how much, what needs to be done, what in your judgment needs to be done ahead of construction close? And how much will that cost? And then the further, very important separation is between the undergrounding work, which is part of the work on the Farm Women's Market Plaza, which means literally the market and the immediate vicinity. All that cost is 100% the responsibility of the developer. We, the town, are not participating in that portion of the overall project. Then there's a whole nother undergrounding project associated with the parks and the garage, which we are party to and contributing toward. So we also need a breakout of the undergrounding work by that categorization as well. And that's what EYA is currently working on. But I wanted to alert the council of that because there is certainly some, some, prospectively, there is a chance that the developers could come back and say, yes, here is some amount of undergrounding that we would wish to pursue prior to construction closing, and then we have to talk about our comfort with that, the money for that, what we can do with that. I will note that the, we have told the other three partners that the additional half million dollars that the state just appropriated and is channeling through the town, while the language is the same language as the other 1 million we're getting from the state. In other words, it's not earmarked for any particular component, other than saying it's for the redevelopment of lots 10 and 24, but it doesn't say, say exactly what. We acknowledge that the reason we got that additional money was because the developers specifically made the case that the utility work was a lot more expensive than had been anticipated. So in fairness, we should realize that that money really goes for that purpose. So that's, there, there may be something there that is, we could take into account if in fact there is work to be done ahead of the construction close. But all I just want to do right now is just tee that up as an issue. I know that we don't have the information and I don't know what, but I just want to mention that as one factor. The, the other is, the other part of the utilities work is that, as we've discussed in council in the past, and, and bearing in mind the prospect of cost overruns generally, but particularly with the utility work, we've raised the question with our partners as to whether it's really necessary to bury the wires on 46th Street. And, and initially, I think there was kind of, oh, really? Why should we be doing this and so forth? But I think as we've talked about it, there's become, become a more acceptance of that. there's become, become a more acceptance of that might make some real sense. And in this last call, I sensed that the developers, EYA in particular, are actually quite enthusiastic about not burying those wires. And one of the reasons is that they're recognizing that even if you bury those wires, you still have homes that have to be connected. And they're not, and in fact, one of the, they would, they might have to put, put back up a pole or two just to connect the wires overhead because they're not going to put them under the street. So the idea that you would bury the wires, but then put poles back up, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. So anyway, I think we're gaining some traction within our group. But ultimately, the case has to be made back to the planning staff because as, as Parks and others have pointed out to us, the planning staff has a very strong desire to see undergrounding of wires anywhere in an urban area in Montgomery County. So wherever there's a new project, they want to put that as one of the requirements. So if we're going to look for an exception to that, we're going to have to go through an engagement process with, with, with the planning staff. Anyway, I think that's work to be continued, but I think we're representing properly the tone that we have, which is we want to be mindful at the outset to manage these cost overruns in a way that is tracked to, which is, which is going to gain support from our residents. And, and not look to cut anything which is really matters to the parks, but something that seems extraneous and is real money. Well, let's, let's see if we can be good managers and stewards now and see if we can save a little bit. And then the the third thing is the charrette process itself. And I think, let me turn it over to you, Ellen, to go through your summary of what the committee had to say. But after that, I may have a few additional remarks to make, particularly about the water feature, which came up in our last discussion, and I've had some further discussions with the developers about it. But I think this is timely, Ellen, to hear from you and the committee and your recommendations.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for giving me a few minutes on the agenda. I will be as brief as possible because I know.
Ellen, can we, can we see you? Can we see you, please?
Oh, I'm driving. I know how difficult it is to time these meetings and agendas. So I just had to carry on with my normal schedule and was not able to guarantee I would be home and on camera, but hopefully you can close your eyes and imagine my smiling face.
As long as you don't close your eyes.
I am not. I have two hands on the wheel. Don't worry. Okay, so I will just assume that you all have received the memo and I will not re hash everything that is in there. But I did want to raise a couple of points because I know this is coming midstream in some respects. You've been meeting with the county and the developers for a long time now. In another respect, this is an important moment. The planning is happening in earnest, I think. And so this is the time then the committee would recommend that the council really seize the day and engage with what some of our priorities are. So as you can see, there were some general themes that I want to give credit, especially to Jay Kelly. He is, has a background as a developer. So he was really able to pull out some of the themes from the residents' comments before the charrette and then also the survey and comments that the town received after the charrette. So a couple of themes that we just wanted to make sure you carried forward were the residents' preference for lushly planted canopy trees, native plants, that kind of greenscaping. Second, a desire for walking paths and shaded seating areas. And this idea of large, open spaces instead of the current design, which we thought most residents commented, or at least there were, there was a consistent theme, everyone. But that is to the detriment the residents overall. So if you could just keep that in mind as you go forward with a lot of meetings and discussions, that would be the recommendation of the committee.
Ellen, pardon me, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure I fully grased the last point. Could you repeat that, please? What was it that the, the committee wants us to be mindful of?
Sure. The common theme was not overprogrammed. For a lot of residents, appreciated and generally came away from the meeting.
You didn't want to overprogram the park. Was that the point? Okay, yeah, that's okay. I just, I hadn't heard her clearly.
Ellen, you're cutting out. That's, so we're, okay, now we can hear you, I think.
Okay. Um, so we just had six recommendations, which we, you have in full in the memo. But I'll just go over a couple. So I think that actually the sixth recommendation is really important to start with. So if you want to talk further, the committee is happy to do this. We, like I said, have folks who have background in this type of work. If not, then we would just recommend that the county produce an operational budget. The, the committee is concerned about long-term funding for the park. So something to consider there. And then we also would recommend that the council would seek and be given the opportunity to discuss the plans as they evolve. So I think that you have those meetings scheduled. But we hope, and we would say the recommendation would be that there would be more involvement with the town and not just you and the council, but maybe not full charrettes, but some kind of ongoing conversation. So the committee would recommend further town forums or we'll leave it to you to take that up if, if you would like. So that was it. Thanks.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for, for Ellen? Or the committee?
I have one. I have a little, I respected the work a lot. A lot of the recommendations I think are very good. But I have, I, there's a little bit of a tension, I can be candid, that I'm trying to sort through. Between on one hand, not wanting the, the park overprogrammed, but on the other hand, everybody liking the individual components that are there. So I'm not quite sure how to, how to reconcile that. Now, the shred, I didn't, my recollection of the shred process, I went to both nights, was that that people generally were quite excited about the elements they saw. And obviously not everybody. We had some people that didn't want the dog park. Some people didn't want the, you know, the plague area, but, but, but most people wanted all those things. So I'm, it's not clear to me how we communicate that we want the park simplified if in fact we're hearing positive comments about all the, 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 the features that are currently in the plant.
That is a quandary. Perhaps the architects will know what's been successful in other parks. So it's not that it's a, but in a way, I guess you could look at it like that. If, and remember this, the thing for everyone and too much. Perhaps the architects would know what's the Goldilocks of park programming. If they don't, then maybe that's a, a topic for a town forum. If the town residents really come back and say, we want all of these things, then I guess the committee recommendation would just go by the wayside, which is totally fine as well.
Well, it feels like from, from reading the memo that there was wide agreement that it should not be an overprogrammed space, but there was not agreement about what that meant. I mean, I think we could relay that there is general agreement that we shouldn't have every court for every sport tried, like crammed into that space, but short of that.
Right. There, I want, I wanted to make a very similar comment. First of all, we're talking about in our, in our survey process, we had 67 residents. And when you looked at the response that they gave, again, there's, I think there was general agreement not to overprogram, but every, every couple of people wanted something else. So we're never gonna, we're never gonna have a situation where everybody agrees to what that individual thing's going to be. And I, I, I would think that the county, the next iteration of what they, we're going to see on June 14th, I guess. They will have heard that and we'll see some pared down version of that. But you know, we'll, we'll see. And we're never going to get everybody to agree on, on what particular element should go in there.
Any other?
Yeah. Yeah. I just would like to say, yeah, thank you, Ellen and members of the committee for, for putting this together. I think you know, we are a voice among many who will have something to say about what goes into the amenities that go into the park. But I think, you know, among the most important points that the committee has made here is just making sure that we have an operational budget that can cover, you know, whatever bells and whistles we throw in there. And then the second thing that I think is really important is that Elm Street Park be upgraded. So that just doesn't look like the poor stepchild at the very edge of a very long stretch of otherwise beautified green space.
Yeah, I want to second that.
I, I did want to comment on the operating, but you know, them putting together an operating budget for future years is fine. In the, in the final, and, and we can use it as ammunition for saying, here's what it, we, when we plan this with the parks in the county, this is what we were envisioning as, as a as upkeep for the park so that it would continue to be a, you know, a benefit to the, to the town and to the community. But as we all know, those all go before the county council. It's part of their budgets. So it's not an assurance that that money's going to be there. It's just gives us some ammunition that we can use in, in, in some of the budget discussions, I'm sure will, the county will have about what the parks get and the parks themselves and what they allocate to their, to each of the parks. So we, it gives us that, that ammunition we need.
I have one other question as well, and I don't know if Ellen in the committee discussions, it was touched upon, or if it has been raised in any of the charrettes. I went to the second one that was at Bethesda Elementary. Is there any discussion about security? I know that, you know, the park will be surround, I mean, there's the, the Bernstein site, which we would assume they will have security on their side. But again, given all the, the issues that people have raised just about safety issues around town, that's going to be a major gathering spot.
Well, and I think something we need to look at in the, in their plan, because a lot of the parks have what they call those blue light systems where they're, they're panic stations essentially. If somebody sees something, they hit them and they get a pretty, pretty quick, immediate police response. So yeah, I think we need to look to see if they've got things, physical things in the park that can be used. And to hear what they say on security. Yeah.
Any other comments here?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of others if I could add. First, on the playground and at Elm Street Park, it's a very good point. And something that just occurred to me and I, something we could ventilate with, with the Parks Department is whether the whole kid's playground, which is way over next to the purple line, should be moved much closer to Willow. Because if you have, you think about the nexus of the market and families going there, that people with young children might well wish to say, oh, I just across the street is a really nice playground. Instead of it's across the street and another two and 150 yards off in a corner that, you know, is pretty inaccessible. So it just occurred to me, but that's something which we at least ask about. I mean, because I don't think, I think we'd all concur that that playground needs a lot of work under any circumstances. And, and why not think of incorporating that more actively in the project? And have it moved at the same time rather than just upgrade where it currently is, just, just one.
And, and it's, it's use is, is by both daycare centers. There's the one that took over where the bank was and our wonders all use that park very, a lot. And it's, and the purple line, if you remember, the, the tunnel or not, or the crosswalk, the, over the tunnel ends where the existing part of the playground is. So that's, that would go away.
And you could even, there's even a safety issue there because you're going to have the bicyclists whipping along and all those little tots are going to be right in their, in the vicinity. So maybe it's.
The, it'll be like where that path is that used to go on to the tunnel there.
Pretty close to that. Yeah, that's, that's where the, the new entrance to the commercial, to, to the Capitol Crescent Trail will be. So it's basically the same place.
But we, we ought to, I guess we could ask them. And what, what are the plan, what is the planning process for the Elm Street Park in terms of its improvements? Because it has to coincide with the development.
We want, we want, we, we've made the point that all, all the parks should be thought of holistically so that the planning is brought together. So this will be part of that.
I mean, one, well, yeah. I mean, I wonder what the best use of that particular space is. Cause I was thinking, you put the dogs over there and there'll be less noise and less smell bothering houses, but you can't with the path there.
Well, no.
So again, it was a pop-up park there.
There, there's another comment I'd like to make about the water feature, which is one of the comments that the committee brought up and which we heard a lot of people about. And I wanted to brief the council about discussion on the water feature, which came up in the, our last partner's meeting. The, clearly there are many people in the Parks Department that would be happy not to have a water feature. It's complicated. It's regulations, testing the water, operating expense, da, 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 da. At the same time, it's clear that the developers are very eager for it. EYA thinks it's a very important aspect of this. And, and I think, yeah, we should be aware that there are a lot of residents who want it and also add some foot traffic and, you know, probably help make the, the whole project more successful. But we also have to have our eyes open about the costs of that as well. At the meeting that we had last week, the, we, the town registered our feeling of, of concern about the fact that appeared that the Parks Department was kind of just moving in its direction to not have the water feature. And we said, hold on here, we're partners. Partners talk to each other. Let's have a discussion about this. And, and I later spoke to Mike Riley, head of the Parks Department to reinforce that. He fully agreed. So I subsequently have asked, you know, is there material for a special meeting we might have specifically focused on the water feature? And, and whether, you know, how it might be, what options there are, how we ought to think about it. That has not happened. But in the meantime, I have had further discussions with, with the developer and the thought is the following, that it might be very useful for the town to at least register now, I mean, as in very soon, long before we get to the next iteration of planning, that we want the water feature to be kept at least as an option. You know, we're not saying yea or nay, but we don't want to say nay. And, and if we keep it as an, I keep that option open and, and can keep it open for a long time, well, let's see what designs there are, what the costs are, what the operating costs are, who's going to pay for the operating costs, how it could be split up. I mean, there, there are all sorts of issues that could be worked through if we have time to do it. And maybe at the end of the day, it's still too complicated and expensive. We all come to that conclusion and we sign off on it. That, that certainly could happen. But what I think But what I think we I would strongly ask the council to to support is that we do not want sort of a bureaucratic foreclosure of something upfront. And then it's just too late to ever get it back in. And that's what I'm fearful of right now, that that the Parks Department could be running ahead and and just planning to come out with this virtual charrette process in mid June and not make any mention of the water feature and say, well, that issue's been disposed of. So with with the council's consent, I would like if perhaps be all right for Irene and me to work on a letter that would go out under the mayor's signature, but make clear that the town cares about keeping this optionality. And also it gives us the and the same letter, the chance to comment and support the different points in in the committee's report that we we support. And try to get that done really quite quickly so that it's timely. I'm certain that that would be supported by the developers who would be very happy to try to hold that optionality open as long as possible themselves. And but it would be useful, I think, just to make sure we've, you know, put a stick in the ground on this point and and don't want to see it just kind of drain because nobody's focusing on it.
So if the I certainly support the the letter and keeping keeping all options available. But is is June fourteenth, like set in stone right now, like or has the Parks Department said they're absolutely going to have something to present to the community? Plans change. So I'm just wondering, it first of all, it conflicts with our next town council meeting. So that's that's another reason I'm bringing this up. But I'm wondering, Barney, if there's an if 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 the Parks Department is thinking about this, you know, budget number in their head and they're saying a water feature is going to eat up X percent of that budget. And we'd rather have it go to other amenities. Is there an option A, option B, like people like like the town and and the developer that wants to see a water feature added, there's there's some dollar figures associated with it. Therefore, whatever's left over can be amenities can be option A or option B with no water feature. Do you know what I mean? So that there's that's why I ask how hard and fast is this June fourteenth date, because that might take a little bit longer to to pull the numbers and really think through it in an imaginative way. But I don't know if that's I can't tell if the Parks Department would even be willing to entertain that.
Yeah.
But go ahead, Todd.
Just quickly, the meeting scheduled for June fourteenth has been advertised on the on the Parks Department website. It says that the time it doesn't have a time. And it says the Zoom link will it's forthcoming. But the date is publicized on their website.
Okay, so at the very least, we have to think about our town council meeting.
I I think I think our goal here would be to keep the optionality open long past June fourteenth. So so ideally, they would they would put into their plan, they would say, if there's a water feature, here's where it would go. And if we don't have a water feature there, then we'll do something else with that bit of land. I mean, that'd be as simple as that. But it would just mean that it's it's something that is still being actively considered as opposed to.
So all money being equal kind of thing, because it isn't. I mean, if if they're if they are concerned about, of course, depending on the size of the water feature, that would cost so much money. I'm just wondering if that's a way to also present the things.
I think ideally down the road, what we would certainly want to know is that we they say ultimately, we'd all be sitting around a table together and they'd say, okay, here are all the amenities and features. And this is what it costs. If you add the water feature, here's the additional cost. One might observe you could take the same approach to some of the other features in the park as well. It shouldn't just be the water features being the standout one. But in any event, let's walk down that path. Okay, how much more is that? Well, how do we think about financing that? Is that that's something which you can get private support for? Is that something that can come from other sources? Does the town want to help out? I don't know. We'd like to know what the cost is. If you tell me the water feature costs $5 million, I don't think we're going to want it. If you tell me the water feature is a few different options and it varies between two hundred and $400,000, well, maybe that's worthwhile. I don't know. But until we have that information, how could we make a sensible decision? And I think the key thing is not to be is to keep it on the table. Exactly. And it's the same thing with the operating costs. And the figure that was thrown out was $30,000 a year. Well, if you split that in a number of ways, that doesn't sound like a lot of money.
Right.
But maybe to the Parks Department it is. I got that. But I that doesn't mean it's money if generally that we see that as a lot. So anyway, I just think the key is to to keep keep the optionality to it.
Put the so so mention about security, it's also going to be incumbent upon Bernstein to ensure this is a safe park. So I think it's worthwhile to have just bring up the topic, but I also anticipate that they're going to be ensuring for their own residents as well that that this is a a safe area. The other aspect of that is the new cannabis legislation that was just passed that while municipalities are cannot, and this wouldn't apply to us unless something happens on the Corso side, but you while a municipality cannot say no to a cannabis distribution, like that we cannot say no to any of that. You can say no as it relates to consumption. So in thinking about this park and and kind of what, you know, could become, that's maybe a question around security as well. So just thinking about that. The other, so so, yes, we'll work on a letter and and that expresses the the comments brought up by the committee. Thank you again, Ellen. And also just have a let's keep it on the table and see where it goes. I I hope that everyone from the committee, Ellen, can also mark on their calendars, June fourteenth, just to get an initial feedback from from, you know, their thoughts and we'll keep going from there.
Good. With this one, the last last topic, which is on this, which is the the contracts, the status of the negotiations. We are still waiting for the Parks Department to come back with a markup of the agreement we submitted to them in December. And they are still saying that they're waiting to finish their agreement or get a first draft out of their agreement with the developer, after which they will then turn to marking up the agreement we sent them. So no new news there. In regard to our agreement with the county, as I think I reported before, we have essentially agreement on all terms, with the exception of one, which has turned out to be naughty, which is that the county attorney, Vicky Gall, is concerned about the conditions precedent to activating the agreement between the town and the county. This is the one that would require us to put in approximately a million dollars to help with the garage portion of the project. And and basically especially concerned about the possibility that somehow there would be a holdup in the the work or the agreement in respect to funding of the portion of the park on Lot ten. And if that were to happen, then and if that were a condition precedent for the our agreement with the county, then the county would be unable to get our money for the development of the garage because we had not yet agreed to terms with the Parks Department in respect to the development of Lot ten. The the point that we made very forcefully back to her and to Joe Stamina, who's head of the Bethesda Parking Lot District and often is involved in this is that among all the different conditions embedded in our resolutions, which we appropriated the money from the town for, no, no commitment to our residents is more important than that both portions of the park be developed and that our money is contingent on the commitment for both to be developed. And that it is simply impossible for us to contemplate anything else. And in my view, but I would hope and believe council occurs, we are not going to go back and ask that question. So the message that we communicated back to the county was, don't ask us to do something that's impossible. We are not going to enter into legal agreements that in any way raise the specter that somehow we could be compelled to start funding one portion of the project without having assurance that the entire project has an adequate financial plan.
So was Gall would did was her point that the she couldn't obligate the county to future obligations?
No, it wasn't that. That's that wasn't that. It was simply, I I want to be careful on how I characterize it because it was a very irritating conversation. But 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 the the her her concern was, we, the county, want to go forward with the development on Lot twenty four, because that's what we are involved with that construction project. We are not going to be involved in the construction project of the park on Lot ten because we're going to transfer the deed from the parking lot district to the developed to to the Parks Department as soon as we finish with all the work on Lot twenty four. And once we've transferred that deed, we're we're finished and we're not going to be involved in the construction or the management or anything else associated with the portion of the park on Lot ten. So therefore, all that I as the attorney for the county care about is the work on Lot twenty four. And I don't want to think that anything could arise in some dispute between you and the Parks Department about Lot ten work that would somehow prevent us from proceeding on work on Lot twenty four. That's what she was talking about. What 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 doesn't make sense about that at so many levels, first, the commitment that the town has made, which is ironclad to our residents. But also, the county does care about the development of the work on Lot ten. The 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 CIPs, the 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 basic instruments of appropriation that the county council approved are for the development of a park on both lots. So it's not like they don't, even if they're not involved in the construction management of it, they still care about it happening. And the other is that we have to come to terms with the Parks Department with an agreement that controls the pace at which we spend for the parks on Lot twenty four and on Lot ten. It's not like we somehow have a different set of issues with the with how we how we work that out on one park versus the other is is the mechanics are going to be the same. So the thing really doesn't add make a lot of sense in my view. But in any event, that's where we are. Now, we have been subsequently advised by our attorney that by Francois Carrier, that Carrier that, you know, subsequent conversation with Vicky Gall, what she's really concerned about is how slow the Parks Department is in getting contracts done. And on that, we could hardly dispute.
Where's the legal issue there?
There's no legal. We all have to wait till they're going to work their agreement.
And she's retiring, Vicky, in July. And there isn't a second, a second person that is her partner to ensure that this gets across the finish line. And we're not this particular contract is one of sixteen. What did they say?
Not that many, maybe four or five.
Okay.
All important.
Yeah, they're all important. So.
Anyway, so that's where we are. I I I think I I have a sense from just seeing everyone's heads. We're all what I've been saying is is appropriate because it's account meetings and Irene, of course, is going to be joining these, has been joining these. But anyway, this is where we are in the agreements. And, you know, we just have to keep keep at it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have something? Okay. Great. Then we'll move on to Zimmerman. Thank you, Ellen. Thanks.
You're welcome to say, Ellen. It's like old home week, you know.
Zimmerman is another great topic, so you're welcome. Well, she was so heavily involved in initially, so, yeah.
I will listen in. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
Zimmerman. It's quite a project. So the council is aware that we had to receive in order to proceed with the work W S S C, because of the utilities there are so shallow, we had to apply for a variance from W S S C to be able to do the grading work and fill work that we wanted to do there as part of the project to improve the grading and graded grading and drainage there. W S S C reviewed the plans. So you need to obtain a variance because you're not providing adequate fill over our assets. They approved the variance. But as a condition of that variance, they said you can't do any work in the park until we improve our assets under the park. Unfortunately, they've done that, but they have not given us have not given us any indication, nor have they been able to give us any indication despite our requesting such information over the past several years of the scope or timing of the project of their of their restoration or improvement project. We've been pressing hard on our contact there, who apparently has been out sick for a while. We've tried to reach out to others. They said they can't give us any information because we have to rely on our on this one individual for for this information. We finally heard from her today and she said she'll run it to ground to see if she can get more information on the scope and timing of their improvement or restoration work. But as it stands now, we sort of sort of have put the brakes on on proceeding anymore, obviously, with with we're we're continuing to proceed with permits from S H A and DPS, and we're still working through those processes. But with respect to W S S C, until they give us until they give us a a project scope and timeline, and until we can negotiate with them potentially or proceeding with certain improvements or all improvements, if they can't give us a specific timing for the improvements they intend to make, I have not much else to report.
I have a question about the improvements that W S S C says they're going to make. Is that related to the water main issue there or is that something else?
They haven't told us whether it's water or or sewer or both.
But. They. Both sewer repairs and improvements to the waterways.
Both.
Yeah, I talked to Mark Torres, the person who signed up for the variance approval. She says that for the sewer, there is a manhole that needs to be brought up to grade and there's a point repair of the sewer lines. That seems minimal. She doesn't know what the scope or the timing of the watering replacements are. I guess as part of various group, they said that after the various departments, she got a note back from the department saying that there was work that needs to be done or that is on the books. And so they requested that she include that condition in the variance group, but she didn't have specific information detailing what the work is. I spoke to somebody in the pipeline division yesterday who ran it around on there. And they're typically the department that handles their capital water main replacement projects. And they said that they don't have any work scheduled on those days of the park. But he didn't know another department that or he hasn't gotten back to me about if there's another department that gets to see just water main line relining projects or things that are replacements that might have flagged it. So we're sort of just still waiting to hear back. I'm not sure that there actually is a project. And could have just been mistaken approval, but until they get back to us for more information, we don't know.
I'll believe that until you come up with better information.
But the 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 water main issue that we had, what was that, like six or eight months ago?
Well, that was a water main break on like East West Highway portion.
The flooded Zimmerman.
That flooded Zimmerman that went through how? Yes.
Is that at least on the list? I mean, because again, you know, if, yeah, so even if, let's just say that there were a W S S C project under Zimmerman and that they actually had a date that they were going to fix it. And we regraded Zimmerman, the Zimmerman would always be at risk until that other water main break is fixed, right?
Of course.
Well, here's the here's the irony of the whole. Here's the rub. They've reached out specifically asking when this project began. We're undertaking this project. Please let us know what you're in, you know, we understand that your assets are old. There have been, you know, a number of water main breaks, including the one that flooded Zimmerman. You know, we believe some some repairs need to be made. Please, please let us know your schedule or do you intend to do so? And they got back saying, we have no intention of doing anything. We have no plans for the next but what, five years, Dave, or ten years or whatever?
Yeah, and they always give themselves an half to say, if we find that there's emergency work, you know, we. They said they didn't have it on any.
So we specifically did outreach to them to ask them exactly about that issue, not only about the recent breaks, but also the age of their assets. And they just got back without any any detail or any commitment whatsoever with respect to work to be performed or understanding that we had a project that we were developing.
So Jason has been through this before in terms of dealing with the county. Has he ever seen a variance condition like this placed?
Dave, do you know?
Other other projects?
I know that he's had projects where the W S S C's grants variances. He was a little gobsmacked by
Okay.
the condition and the lack of information.
Yeah. Gobsmacked is a good. Okay, I just, you know, that I I was trying to see if he's he's worked on other like kind of public projects before, if he had seen that and. And, and it ended up being like, oh yeah, we've seen that. They don't come around for another decade. You know what I mean? Um, but.
The tourist league bureaucratic.
Yeah.
And they're hardly giving information.
Sure.
Um, so he's had frustrations with them before, but I don't know if he has anything specific in. You know, he's brought it.
Sure.
As far as the time.
Sure.
We get back to that.
Yeah. So, so what do we do as a, like, do we say? Give it a couple of months and, and then, you know, say enough is enough here. We, we have to make a decision as a council about what. Kind of risk we're willing to, to take in terms of proceeding or not proceeding with the project. Like, how do we?
My, one of the things I, as we were talking about this, it is a bureaucracy and you're going to get those kinds of. Um, tactics which don't particularly result in a quick outcome. But the, th- this is the, a commission. So at what point do we elevate it above the bureaucracy? And say, send, you know, send a letter to the commission itself and say, look, we've. We've been working for two years. We've had these issues and our, our park has been flooded. We, we're going into a major. Pro, you know, just laying it out and saying, this is the response we got from your. You know, from, from your bureaucracy. And at what point do we do that? Um, Todd, do we, i- is that shooting ourselves in the foot with the bureaucracy or do, is it, is it worth? You know, taking the shot?
I think, I think it's worth it. I think it's definitely worth escalating. I don't know. You know, to what extent the commissioners are involved in. You know, to, to, that they're, they're, they're intertwined with the bureaucracy. I don't know if. They would be willing to go to bat for us, but assumingly ostensibly that's their. Purpose as representatives of Montgomery County, those who represent Montgomery County. So it's absolutely an option and, and something that I think we should consider. If we don't hear anything just positively or, or. Or.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want to do it and shoot ourselves in the foot if within another month or so it's going to be resolved.
Yeah.
But if, if it's longer than that, then we ought to think about. Escalating the, the argument.
I'll ask, we'll, we'll request, we'll, we'll follow up with WSSC requesting by, by no later than next council meeting. And then if we don't get anything by then, we can discuss next steps. I think that's the best way to proceed.
I like that idea a lot. It's good.
Okay, any, any other comment? Great. Um, so the next topic, uh, to discuss is the antisemitism resolution. So. As we know, Joel was, um, spearheading this, this particular effort. Um, what sort of updates do we have, Todd, about how many communities have signed on versus still considering versus. Um, said no versus they have updates?
Well, if communities have signed on. Um, as originally drafted, as the resolution was originally drafted. Um, one, two, have not. Chevy Chase View did not and the town of Drummond. Um, did not. Uh, we have.
Drummond.
Section three modified the resolution to remove the actionable items. Latinsville, or excuse me, let me start. Chevy Chase Village, section three, modified the resolution to remove actionable items. Rockville. Um, modified the content of the resolution and added a reference specifically to some of the outreach efforts that it was doing. And Latinsville indicated that it would, um, be happy to consider, but it was, it was going to await. Um, our outreach, our reaching out back to Rockville to see if they would, uh, consider. The resolution without some of the amendments it had made. And so Latinsville is a tentative, yes, pending an updated resolution and we're still waiting. Barney has reached out to. The mayor of Rockville, uh, twice and is still waiting for a response. Respect to reconsideration of some of the amendments they made to the resolution. We have not heard at all from Barnesville, Poolsville, Tacoma Park, Washington Grove.
That's five.
Despite reaching out to Tacoma Park. Both through. The current mayor of Tacoma Park and through Kate Stewart, um, Barney reached out to Kate to ask if she could. Request the current mayor's consideration or the current elective body's consideration of this, uh, resolution, but. We have not heard anything to date. Uh, Tacoma Park's consideration of the, of the resolution.
Kate was helpful, by the way. She immediately sent, sent it forwarded to the current mayor. And allowed me to have a direct contact with her, but she is, the mayor has not responded. Uh, and I, I pinged, uh, Bridget Newton today, the mayor of Rockville. To follow up on the email I sent her last week and, and, um, uh, have not heard, yet heard back. Um, I think the. My own personal view is that there's merit in trying to make the effort to get Rockville on board. Gaitherburg has signed on and be great. And then with, if we get the, those two large municipalities, that might help us get to come apart and that would be, it's worthwhile, I think. Are making that effort. In respect to the changes that Rockville brought up, they were kind of in two categories. One are a bunch of very modest things which have to do with. Being even more inclusive about other language of protecting other minority groups, basically LGBTQ community and so forth. Um, and, and then the other was a whole sentence that said, you know, what we're doing here is also consistent with Rockville's own plans to do X, Y, Z. And, and I wrote back to Mayor Newton saying, um, first of all, just want to check if you. In respect to most of these changes, they're fine, I think, and I have to check them with the council, but offhand, they don't seem to be a concern. But it does mean we now have to go back out to other twelve municipalities for these changes. So before we do, just want to make sure that you really want them. And it's not just nice to have, but you really care. If you do, then let me know and, you know, we can go through that process. Uh, but I did raise a stronger concern about any reference to Rockville's own activities. Just because that, that's not really on point to the sense of the resolution, which is meant to be. Very universal across all communities without any particular calling out of what one community is doing. And so I really did ask her to reconsider that. Um, and, and I say, we haven't heard back yet, so, um, I will. Continue that effort, um, and hopefully we can run that to ground, but it could well be that they would. Want the other changes, in which case we will have to recirculate it.
Right.
But as you pointed out, Irene, that's not the worst thing in the world. That happens with these resolutions. We, we indicated when we first sent it around that it was in draft. No one can be surprised if some modest changes are suggested and you just work that process.
Send me to this. Can someone summarize what the changes are that were suggested?
I, I, I can send you the email after the.
Okay.
So you can see what they are for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, we, we.
Didn't change the intent. It didn't change the intent of anything.
Right, but also, also any, any change that I, till I heard back from her, how serious they were, I didn't know quite what to do with them, but in any event. Any changes that we may wish to go out with, even if it's simply acquiescing to what Rockville wants, has to be reapproved by this council. So, yeah.
So we continue. Any other?
The only other thing to add is I think as a practical matter, when we started this process, I know Joel was very, very eager to see everything worked out very quickly. I think a lot of us felt that realistically, you know, it would take many months to get the signatures. And that the actual programming would really be taking place in the fall anyway. So it's not, you know, this isn't. Wildly off the mark.
And, and he did express to me that he would still like to stay involved with this particular initiative. Um, so. Whether it becomes a community relations, you know, the putting, working with other municipalities for events or whatever, he. He, he said, please feel free to reach out. So, um, great. Any, anything else?
But I will send around Mayor Newton's markup so you can see.
And I did, um, did Tacoma Park flat out say no or just?
Just haven't responded. We're just a dinky little small municipality. We're not a city, Steph. I mean, really.
We didn't go no nukes.
Right.
Okay. So the next part of, uh, is, is just kind of updates. We're not necessarily having. As the thoughtful discussions that we had tonight on, on these four, um, aforementioned issues, but. First is the gas powered leaf blower ban proposal. Um, and, uh, Joy, we've, we've had a chance to, to speak about this. What, uh, we're going to do is set, is set up a separate work session to go through, because there's a few, um. Sticky wickets to go through and, and, uh, you know, in terms of. The, uh, citation amount, the process associated with that. How do we, you know, get everybody so they feel as if they're. Being given a, a chance and frankly, what the timing of something might, of this might look like. We don't. We work best when we're iterative, not necessarily. Uh, so, uh, that is going to be scheduled for, for June, um, and we'll, we'll send that information out tomorrow. Any other comment, any other updates on that part? Okay, that's all that I had there. Any other comments on that? Okay. Forty-sixth Street, um. So this is a, uh. This particular, uh. Request came from a, a resident, um, who lives on that side of town on, on, on Wall Street. And was seconded by, by Joel, who also lives on, on Wall Street to take a look at. The segment of forty-six that runs between Leland and Walsh. Um, as you know, for. Since before nineteen eighty, uh, it has been a do not enter one-way designated, uh, segment. And the proposal that, or the ideas that were put forth was to, um, understand whether it can't. It can be converted, should and can be converted to a two-way street or some other option. Um, so that, as, as Todd mentioned earlier, that particular proposal, um, or I should say the, the, the. The engineer, the traffic engineer has, has put forth his recommendations, mitigation measures, things like that. And the town staff is also overlaying some kind of pros and cons, uh, as it relates to each of those. That's also going to be distributed, um, but we'll probably discuss that in the next. Uh, uh, town council meeting, whenever that might be.
Can I ask, does the, uh, do the pros and cons include what happens when the market park is developed as well? I mean, it feels like what happens to that little strip should be, uh, part of.
The fact that it won't be a parking lot to cut through.
Exactly, exactly. And there might be even more foot traffic from the town to that.
Because there's no sidewalks. Yeah. So as a part, just to, just to, uh, since we're, we're on that.
I'm just going to preface everything I say for the next like six meetings that, forgive me if you've talked about this already.
No, 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 this is, this is important for anyone listening in as well. So right now, the, the, um, designs for lot ten. That's second, that's going to be converted straight to a, a park, does call for a sidewalk. Um, on that side. Well, that's what we have to understand a little bit better, what, what is involved, because is it bumping it out? Is it, you know, what, what is happening in that area? And that's, that kind of detail is not known yet. But for purposes of the discussion, there's an assumption here that at some point in time, there is going to be a park. So what's the, what's the right thing to do? Yeah. Um, but it goes into further things about because in terms of the, um. The narrowness or what of the, of the street segment versus even other parts of forty-sixth street. There's different. Um, and other things. So we'll, we'll discuss that. I wanted to just, um, we also don't know what the neighbors think. Um, you know, this is a request that's come from one resident and seconded by a second resident. Uh, and, uh, we don't know how area residents are going to react. So this will lead to a, a forum. Versus any sort of decision or anything. We want to understand what area residents also feel, but they, they should have at least one, if not. More options in front of them. Okay, any other things on that? Next is Rosemary Triangle. So Joy, that's also. If you, if you would like to provide an update with that.
Sure. Um, so as you know, we discussed, I guess it was back in January, a proposal that, uh, the Climate and Environment. Committee, uh, presented to the council to, uh, make some improvements to Rosemary Triangle. And then, um, we heard, um, over the ensuing months. Um, uh, quite a lot of feedback from residents, um, not only. In the general Rosemary Triangle area, but residents, um, across the town. Um, you know, who expressed also their feelings about, um, the nature of the, uh, uh, Climate and Environment Committee. Proposal. Um, and I think, uh, there's some common ground between the proposal and what residents have written in. Um, which according to that letter, to which many people signed on to is, is really, you know, openness to. Looking at the plantings there at the site and, um, perhaps replacing some of the invasive plants with native species. Um, and so we've had a survey of the site, um, just so that we know. Uh, done so that we know what's under it, you know, again, to avoid shades of Zimmerman Park. Um, and so what I would propose is that, um, it, you know. Now that we know what's under the park is that we look at and, you know, I can now defer to you, Todd, in terms of how to handle this. Um, to kind of look at identifying or mapping the plantings that are currently in the site now. Um, and look for proposals, um, of, you know. If we know where invasive plants are, would we want to remove those? And if so, would we want to replace them with what kinds of species?
Would you like to proceed?
Go ahead, sorry. Go, go ahead, Todd.
Would you like the, the staff to proceed with that effort now?
Um, well, I would like to get just some comments from colleagues on that.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Um, I think first I'd comment that we, we, there, I guess we have seen a draft of the survey, but not the final survey.
That's right.
And we have made a commitment that we'll put the final survey on the website, let residents see it, which I guess will probably forthcoming next week or something like that.
Hopefully soon, Dave. Do you know what the update is on that?
Okay, anyway, when that, whenever that comes, we'll make that generally available to people. Um, the, um, and, um. Uh, beyond that, I think, uh, yeah, getting a map of exactly what currently grows there is right. I do think, just looking ahead, if we're going to get to the point of looking at proposals, um. I would like to open the lens and allow some different landscape architects to make proposals for what plantings they'd recommend and how they should be arranged. And to focus on that a- aspect of it. I think that you're exactly right. That was the common ground. Everybody was looking for. Prospects for new plantings, but if we're going to do it, let's do it right and. Get some professionals to consider what makes sense and, you know, give ourselves some options.
Should we, uh, maybe consider in doing that some more communication with. The folks who were on that letter because it feels like they're watching that site pretty closely. And if they see more people coming over and mapping it and making recommendations, we might be buying ourselves a. A controversy that we really, there's no point to, and I think as long, I think we need to communicate early and often about what exactly we're doing over there.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. I would recommend that the council not proceed. Too quickly here. I think we need to wait to get the survey. We should discuss it. And then at the next public meeting, we should discuss how to proceed, um, with respect to the scope and how we, how we, uh, implement that scope.
I will say that landscape architects, you. It's very hard to send a proposal out, asking them to submit, I guess, a plan or a price to put a plan together. Um, specifically something where you find a messy architect and work with them to help.
The vision.
Right.
Vision.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
Uh, Rich, do you have any, um?
I'm, I'm. My point, I think you, you're correct. Um, but. We also like to get ideas. The, the, running the beauty contest upfront is one of the most valuable things to do. In terms of getting ideas from different prospective parties. And when they come in to bid to get the business. They do have to put something out. It's not just saying what their resume is or their past projects. They, we can ask them to say that. Giving, you know, presenting some ideas is going to be part of the solicited effort.
But I, one of the things, after we do all of this stuff and the communication with all the residents, one of the things I think is imperative on us is. We actually go over there ourselves in a work session and look at it and see what we're talking about.
Um, I, I just commented that after we go through all the communication with all the residents. We need to do our, our own work session by physically going out there and looking to know.
I agree with you completely, Rich. I've been there almost every day. I've all been gone in that direction. It's really nice. Presence like it, we should have a leak. Didn't want to, you know, I'm late, but let's take a lot of it and, you know, they're going to be. Deeds. Want to do that kind of thing. Yeah, I might request that, um. Obviously, when the final survey is ready, that that be sent to residents that, you know. sent to residents that, you know, it's a matter of good governance to understand what the heck is underneath. I mean, anything that's of public use. And that we then, if 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 the council wants to do something with respect to the replacement of plantings, then we just call it that. Do you know what I mean? I I think that we can't, we can't call it project. You know, somehow to be able to convey to residents through a walk-in or I think you're thinking about like, okay, let's invite the area residents with us as the council and you can walk around the area and say, we heard you loud and clear. You really like this far.
Some of you, the residents have indicated that they, you know, maybe would be willing to replace certain plantings, you know. So whatever terminology we used to to make it a very tight initiative, replacement, whatever, you know, I think will assuage a lot of concerns. And then, you know, we we can then afterwards or something like that entertain the idea of a bench, two benches, you know. But I I feel that we might need to take two steps back to take a step forward with this. But we will end up in a place that, you know, will will work out. But I think it might just need to be a little bit different time. Yeah, there's no hurry. So I personally would say it's not actually the right time at the moment to get the the plant inventory just yet. Let's get the survey. Let's get the final. Let's reach, reach out with a letter to the residence cover letter on top of the survey results saying it's good, it's a good thing to just know what's here. We did hear from you before that maybe some replacement of plantings. And that's it. We would like to schedule a a walk-in or whatever and for for some to be determined date. And then we can see where where people are at, because I'm sure they're going to come with their opinion. So a little bit of a different approach, only slower, I guess. That's what I would recommend. Yeah.
I I support that. Doing it very gradually makes sense to me. And I guess just two comments, which is I agree, it's a very beautiful spot. I go by there a lot myself in the springtime. It's not particularly attractive many months of the year. I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty because it's grass and plants, but there's no special color or anything else. So that's part of my point, that there is an opportunity with replantings to make something that's more colorful, more months. But it's all planting, so I'm still in that, within that orbit. But I will say, and I and I and I, I'll just put this out there now, I wasn't going to, but since you've raised the question of benches. And it's personal to me. Many of you know, my wife has become quite disabled. So I've really begun to see the world through the eyes of someone who's disabled. And and to me, benches are really important there. I also think they're important elsewhere in the town, but I really think they're important there. And because there are a lot of people, I don't think it would be just my wife, but but Marjorie, but others, who whose ability to enjoy that park depends upon their being able to sit, both to rest once they get there before they return home or just to enjoy it. And and I I feel very strongly about that. And I would be reluctant to see us go forth with a proposal that so separates the planting from anything else, that there's any implication that somehow the plantings are enough or all that should be done. I I I think my, I could be convinced differently, and I'm just, I haven't given it a lot of thought. But I would prefer, at least my feeling right now is that there be, I agree, you may not want to call it a project, but but whatever we do, improvements.
Even that could.
Be plantings plus two benches, but it's clear that's what we intend. And I'm quite happy to have that conversation with residents who, if they believe that it's inappropriate to put in a couple of benches up near the sidewalks. I've got a real issue with that position, and I'm quite prepared to have that discussion sooner and not just have it later after we've done a lot of other work. And I certainly don't want to leave an impression. I didn't mean this, Irene, but I would not want to leave the, have anybody think that somehow the council is approving only this. Oh, wait a minute, now they're coming up with benches. Why are they doing? I don't want that situation. I want to be completely transparent about what we might be envisioning. And for me, putting in a couple of benches there is very important to do.
And full disclosure, and I appreciate your comment, the reason I my wife and I took a walk around there was I I went there to look to see if there would be a couple of places for benches. And I and that's why I suggest we go out there and physically look at it. Because I think it is an important addition there for people to enjoy it. I mean, I it's one thing to walk by it. It's another thing to sit there and be and be able to sit there and enjoy it. And a lot of people need to sit there. They can't continue. So I'm fully supportive of the idea of, oh, we need to look at it. We need to physically look at it, because I what I don't want to, what I personally don't want to do is I I I think what will, I I don't want it to be a a big renovation project. I just, it doesn't need it, and we don't, and we don't need to spend that kind of money on it. But there are a few things that I think would improve it and, you know, putting in different, more seasonal colorful plants is one thing, and maybe a couple of benches, but we need, we need to look at it.
Yeah. My only point, I I was not to slow off things like a bench, but just just to slow down to make sure that we, the stakeholder input catches back up with us and we don't run back into the same situation. That's that's all.
For the walk-in, just to have Tolbert make sort of an inventory of the species and the condition of the trees, the type of plants that are there as far as identifying what's native, what's not native, what's the basic, just so when you're actually there.
How much effort do you think that will be for Tolbert?
And I think that would be useful in the letter, too. The arborist is going to look at the trees and tell us the condition.
Yeah, and I I just feel that people will, one upon reading that saying, they're still gonna. Yeah, yeah. If you're talking that, you know, because he has a lot of responsibilities. So if this is something that it can be in general terms, that there's six trees, they're healthy, or one is, you know, whatever, then then I think, and and the plantings are separated, like native, non-native, invasive. I think if we have that those that general scheme, I think that will be good for a walk-in or whenever that happens. Likely at this pace, the the walk-in or may not occur. If it doesn't occur, yeah, it might not occur until September anyway. So, okay. August, yeah, when no one's here. Yeah. Okay. Does that help? Is that right? Okay. Great. Then that the last thing is the Coquelin Run or up and upper Coquelin Run. So this is also an update on a letter, or sorry, email has gone out to the different agencies that you know, it's not just Purple Line, it's not just the Maryland Department of the Environment, it, you know, Army Corps of Engineers, like, there's a lot of potential stakeholders as to people who have bits of information that might be able to provide some insight as to what happened, what has been happening in this section behind Elm Street, not, we're not talking when it rounds out to Lynn, but behind Elm Street, where residents have noticed a change in the flow. And if some some cases entirely no flow whatsoever, no water flow whatsoever. So only the update is that 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 requests have gone out. There appears to be a couple of responses to this request for a community meeting. One is, I'm not the person to talk to about this. I'll push it up to my boss, who might let me know who the next person I should, we should talk to. And otherwise, this is the first I've heard about this. So I think this is going to probably take a while to I A identify who who might be the right folks to provide information and then B, we may need to involve the state delegation to request the meeting. But, you know, it's moving forward. So Todd, do you have anything else you want to add to?
It's moving forward at the speed of the stream.
I, if I could just mention one quick thing, and in an attempt to make myself somewhat intelligent about this issue, I did a little bit of my very sophisticated Googling on this this week. And just want to remind, I'm sure this is something everyone's aware of, but I just wanted to remind folks of the twenty seventeen exchange between the town and the Maryland Department of Environment on the Water Appropriation and Use Permit, which is directly relevant here. And I am just wondering if it is worth pulling those exact folks in, because their rejection of our concerns about the water use permit was, oh, don't worry about Coquelin Run, nothing's going to happen to it. Like specifically, that's what they said in their public rejection of our concern. So I'm happy to send that around.
Could you please? Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Look at that, but it's it, there's a lot of good stuff to quote in there.
Definitely. Thank you.
Where are, like, apparently, whatever experts we used, thought that the water table, that that the the disturbance would have a direct effect on Coquelin Run. And the Maryland Department of the Environment said, no, 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 the depths are completely different. They may be. I mean, correlation is not causation, but especially in water, but I'm happy to send links to this stuff around if you guys want to refresh your recollection.
Perfect. Any other business at all? Okay, we are done.
I want to, I just wanted, one more thing, just wanted to thank Barney for his service as mayor. He's was a stellar mayor, and I appreciated working with them and will continue to do so. But I very much appreciated his service as mayor.
Yes, thank you, Barney.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for saying that, Todd. Appreciate it.
That we are adjourned.